To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Benjamin, here.
Baylor, here.
Oldman, here.
Kastor, here.
Meyer, here.
Sardina, here.
Tarks, here.
Is there anyone desiring to be heard? And I will make a note that I will take separate comment during item E, which is the Class B combination license and the fire department. I'll have separate public commentary in those. Is there any, anyone at this time that would like to be heard on anything else? None. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion.
I abstain.
Motion passes. Any communications?
None.
Committee reports, library board.
Uh, library board met Tuesday, July 8th at six o'clock. Uh, the transition to new director is going very well. Summer reading program has over a hundred and ninety participants. That's doing great. Storytime with Melissa had over fifty attendees. Bridges will be replacing our KFA computer as well as the director's laptop. Uh, the Chappoli fundraiser pulled in around eighty dollars. Uh, we reviewed, uh, the meeting room policies. We approved the library standard certifications. Uh, we started discussing the twenty twenty-six, uh, budget. And as always, we're still looking for board members. Our next meeting will be August 12th. End of report.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
Bridges is going to be replacing those computers. Those will come from the library budget. Bridges is offering us, uh, preferred pricing through state.
Oh, I stand corrected. I am sorry.
Noted. Thank you.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you. Community foundation, uh, last night we met. We talked about, uh, just kind of the general needs of the Clark House and buildings and grounds and the issues that are needed. End of report. Finance.
Finance committee met a few minutes ago and, uh, re- reviewed, uh, the revenue. Uh, we approved the, I'm sorry, June invoices of nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and ninety-nine cents. We also reviewed and approved the June statement of revenues expenditures. Pass it on to the full board for approval. End of report.
Thank you. Building board.
Building board met at five o'clock this evening. Uh, we tabled an occupancy permit or a request to extend hours for Charlotte Amore, uh, for one month till the August meeting. We approved an occupancy for EG Legacy Collision Auto Repair LLC at forty-five twenty-five North One Hundred Twenty-Seven Street and assigned for them. And we approved the fence permit for Jay Jost at fifty-eleven One Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street. End of that report.
Community events.
On behalf of the community events committee, we'd like to thank everybody that participated in our Fourth of July parade, all the volunteers, parade participants, uh, public safety DPW for helping make that a great event. Our next meeting is scheduled for next week. End of report.
Thank you. I need to add in, uh, item F, public safety met tonight?
Yes, thank you. Yep, and then that was at at five thirty. Uh, police department gave a full update. Uh, just a couple of the highlights, uh, Officer Taliya Long Ross returned to duty after, uh, some military leave. Uh, Officer Bartosik is going to be noted here in just a minute. Uh, we have full staffing, which is excellent. I have been staffed fully. A lot of training, a lot of extensive training, just to be a couple of notes from that, that our new rifles that they're training with are well received. Uh, very good upgrade. And there's a lot more, but if you want to know it all, you can just view everything online. Just go to YouTube and to the Butler site and you'll see everything. Uh, the fire department also gave a report and our apparatus is in good shape, but staffing is the biggest issue. Uh, we're probably at an all-time low right now for different reasons, but our staffing is extremely low. And I know we'll be speaking to that more in the, in the meeting later on. End of report.
Thank you. Report of the administrator.
Yes, uh, the road project is nearing completion. We are going to, they completed concrete work, I believe, last week and early this week. They are going to be milling the road, um, I believe in the twenty-second and twenty-third, and then we'll be doing the, um, final paving job, um, probably the week after that. Uh, we are, we got our final reports for our dye water testing project. There's, um, I communicated with the board earlier today, some of the results of that. Um, there's definitely some work on the infrastructure that needs to be done there, um, but that will be handled next year with, um, some funding from MMSD. Um, we are also working on our twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, we had some positive news with the, uh, health insurance costs being lower than what I had originally thought, um, from the state's communications in May. Um, so we're continuing to work on that and our interns, um, continue to turn out very, very positive work, um, some of which I will be detailing tomorrow in my, um, weekly report, but they've just been awesome at communicating with residents, doing property maintenance complaints, um, water bill collection, just all-stars. So I, I'm very, very happy that, um, we were able to do that. End of report.
Thank you.
Can I interject a quick question on that, on that report, that water testing? I noticed that some of those places were leaking like a gallon a minute. Is that going to be addressed short-term at all or is there anything that can be done or?
Um, we don't have that currently, um, budgeted. Uh, I talked with our engineer to, uh, today about that, um, and he said that that's definitely going to have to be done. Um, the lateral groutings are definitely have to be done, um, earlier in the year next year, once we get our yearly allotment from MMSD and the competitive grants. If we, if the bill so chooses, we could, um, try to do that and go out for bid on that type of project this year, but that would be, um, a couple tens of thousands that we didn't have budgeted.
Right, I guess we would just have to weigh that into how much we're losing every day.
Um, so that's, that's, it's not water, um, itself, like from, that we're getting billed from Milwaukee, it's sanitary, um, sanitary water that's leaking out of the pipes. So we're not, you know, losing that water. It's just, it's, there's a risk of it going into the, the stormwater system that, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, new business. Item A, recognition of police officer Isaac Bartosik for completing his probationary period with the Butler Police Department. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chief Zulowski.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, so something that's really important to us here at the police department, uh, anytime any of our members achieve, uh, a significant anniversary, an accomplishment with our department, we one, uh, certainly want to recognize them. Uh, and I believe doing that publicly is important for both the, the department and for the community to see what's going on within our department. So Officer Bartosik, uh, came to our department back in twenty-twenty-three, uh, came from out of state and recently completed his probationary period. So a probationary period for law enforcement officers and in our profession basically is something that signifies that you're now a permanent member of the department. Um, there are certain things related to the union and other things that go with that. Um, but I just want to specify that it's not something that is given, that if you're here a certain amount of time, you're now this permanent officer. It's something that's earned and Officer Bartosik has certainly done that, um, over the last eighteen-plus months that he's been here. His family is here today to, with us to celebrate this, so thank you all for being here. Um, and I know it's been a, a long journey, right? So from moving from out of state, uh, for the majority of the time that, that, um, Isaac was here, um, he was traveling back and forth on his off days out of state, uh, to be with his family and then was here committed to our department. So I certainly commend him for that and commend you all for, I guess, putting up with it, right? So good job. Um, I want to thank the other officers that are here. So again, the majority of our department, uh, is here tonight, whether they came in earlier on their off day, so thank you for being here. Uh, again, it speaks to the team that we have here and what's important to us as an organization. Um, and it's really, again, it's each other. Um, it's maintaining, um, our staffing to where it's at, maintaining morale, um, that people actually want to come into work and then we want to serve the community. So I talked about in our public safety meeting, some of the community engagement initiatives that we've partaken in, in the last several months. That's credit to all the officers and everybody that's here working. Um, and again, very, very proud to, to say that Isaac is now a permanent member of this department and want to take a few minutes to publicly acknowledge him and recognize him, so congratulations. If you'd like to say anything or introduce your family. So, right, I appreciate it, chief, thank you. So the very first thing I want to say is I appreciate everything my wife's done for me because without her holding down the fort back in Missouri, I, there's no way I'd be here. Every other week with me driving four hundred miles each way just to be able to see my family for a long experience, extended period of time, little under two years actually, without her dedication to be able to raise my five children, absolutely would not be without her, so absolutely give her a round of applause, please. That being said, now she's got to deal with me all, all the time, so. So now it's going to be one of those things, it'll be another adjustment period. I also want to thank the command staff here for being, uh, very gracious with, with my schedule, with my hours, giving me time off, uh, giving me the opportunity of having overtime and stuff to support my family, so I appreciate that as well. Also want to appreciate everybody else that I work with in the department that's done a lot of trades for me, so if I've got a significant events or there's times where I've been sick or I've had emergency situations by, they didn't even ask, they just said, absolutely we'll switch you days. And I want to just let everybody know that I very much appreciate that as well. So I really appreciate everything you guys have done for me. So, congrats.
All right. Thank you.
Item B, discussion and possible action on a parade permit for St. Agnes Annual Sam Bears Walk Run.
Yes, so this is the annual parade permit that St. Agnes puts in for, for the, uh, Sam Bears, uh, Walk Run. Uh, the parade route is included in the packet. Um, you know, it's historically been a pretty well-attended event, um, no issues in the past with anything. They did turn in their liability insurance form, which is also included in the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade permit for St. Agnes Annual Sam Bears Walk Run.
I'll second that motion.
Oh. I heard Mark and Brad. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item C, discussion and possible action on a revised underground distribution easement for Wisconsin Electric Power Company. We Energies unlots seven and eight of block thirty-one of New Butler, located in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section one, township eight north, range twenty east in the village of Butler, Waukesha County, Wisconsin.
And yes, that is, that is the correct legal description.
Say that again, I.
Um, so yes, this, uh, we passed this, uh, easement back, I want to say, two meetings ago. Um, I included the email in the packet. Basically, uh, We Energies, their designer, um, discovered that there was some, after there was some, uh, some, we, uh, Digger's Hotlines polled, um, that there was a private utility, um, in one of the sections that they were going to be boring in, so they have to move it over five feet. So they're looking to extend the easement, um, in the section that I believe heads south, um, just by five feet, um, to be able to accommodate that. It's not going to extend, it's not going to widen on the northern edge. I kind of, I included that, um, drawing in the packet. It'll just be that southern part that will be extended by five feet.
So it's going from ten to fifteen?
Correct.
And all the other same conditions apply that we discussed last time? So do we, will we just, if this passes, do we just amend the agreement that we already had?
Yes, that would get amended with any language referring to the ten feet.
Okay. Is there a motion or any additional questions?
With that, I'll make a motion to accept the revised underground distribution easement.
I'll second that.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item D, discussion and possible action on granting a Class B beer and Class C wine retail license from July fifteenth of twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six for Charlotte Warren, one, at, located at one-two-five-one-nine West Hampton Avenue, Butler, five-three-zero-zero-seven. For Charlotte, our more wedding and event center located at one-twenty-five-nineteen West Hampton Avenue, Butler, Wisconsin, five-three-zero-zero-seven.
So for clarification purposes, because I've had a couple of questions on this, um, Charlotte Amore, uh, the pa, over the past year had a Class B beer and a Class C wine license, um, so that's how she's operating currently. She also applied for the Class B combination retail license, which is coming up after this. So they're technically two separate licenses, but with the two applicants for the reserve license, um, that we have up for, for grabs right now due to the previous Derby District being foreclosed on, um, this basically guarantees that no matter what the, the board chooses, she'll at least have that beer and that wine license, um, as she previously did. Um, there was some personal issues that prevented her from, um, filling out the permits in time. There was, um, some family emergencies that happened, um, so in case we were wondering why that deadline was missed, it was, um, just for some personal reasons there. So we've had no, uh, as you heard in the public safety committee meeting, we've had no issues, um, with the business, um, really to note. Um, so she's been, uh, a very good, um, tenant of the village, uh, for her, her beer and wine license.
And she has that license now, correct?
She, she did up until the, the end of June, yes.
And we're just renewing this.
Correct.
I just want to clarify that Class B beer is different than the next item of Class B combination.
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
Understood.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Class B beer and Class C wine retail license.
I'll second that.
I heard Brad and Eric. A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Next item is E, discussion and possible action on granting a Class B combination retail license from July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. I'm going to have the administrator then explain this a little bit more and then I will take, uh, public comment from our audience, because I think we have some people in this, in the audience that might want to talk about this. So we'll be discussing, uh, the two candidates or two people have applied for the same license, that's Charlotte that I just, uh, explained, and then Butler Stop LLC, forty-seven fifty-three North Avenue, twenty-fourth, for Butler Stop LLC located at forty-seven fifty-three twenty North Avenue, twenty-fourth, which is the old Derby District.
Correct. So with this license, it is the only remaining, uh, reserve license that, uh, the village has outside of the Village of Pewaki license that I was able to negotiate, um, that is still outstanding for thirty thousand dollars, um, instead of the usual ten thousand dollars. Um, so with this, this, uh, license became available when the Derby District, uh, did not renew because their, their business was foreclosed on, um, so that became available. And in communication with the State Department of Revenue, the State Department of Revenue stated that if any, uh, anybody during that time after that license expires can apply for it and if there's more than one applicant, um, the village board has the ability to, um, obviously you have to take everything into account, um, including business hours, uh, business plan, um, experience, background checks of the, the agents and whatnot, um, that you can then apply and, and choose what you believe is going to be the best, uh, business to have this license, um, out of the two. So currently we have, as President Kastor said, Charlotte Amore, um, and the Butler Stop LLC, which is going to be taking over for the old Derby District. Um, we do have the, uh, agent for Butler Stop here, um, Davina, and also the attorney for, um, Jay, um, for, that owns, uh, the Amoco and that building, so they are both here and then Charlotte and her husband are also here to speak.
Do either party want, we do have your letters, uh, also I think you both have wrote letters. Do either of you want to speak at this time to the board? You could come forward and. And if the board has any questions, we'll. Yes.
I am asking for this license because I'm currently running under the liquor and beer license as you stated. Um, I have done already over seventy-five parties, successful parties with no issues. Um, we currently have where they can, um, bring in liquor and I think that that is great. It's, it's been good, but if I have more control over the liquor that's coming in, I can kind of monitor safety and other things of that sort. So that is one of the reasons also why I'm asking for the Class B liquor license.
Any, so, so right now, you're, I think we, we discussed this last year, your customers, were you going to have bartenders come in or were you handling that yourself?
I have bartenders, I have bartenders, but with, uh, the event planning, sometimes they bring in wine and drinks because we have the BYOB thing going, excuse me. Um, but I think that it would be safer and easier to monitor if we actually were able to control the liquor as far as what's coming in and coming out, and we do as far as our security is concerned and things of that sort. But that is one of the other issues why I'm asking for Class, Class B as well.
Do you charge when they bring in their own? Is there a charge to bring in?
No.
What you would charge then if you had the license and you were able to turn around and sell it?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the board have any other questions for Charlotte?
I do not.
No. Okay, thank you. And then if the agent would like to step forward? And your name, please?
I am Attorney David Halbrooks.
Thank you.
Uh, evening, members. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I do represent the Butler Stop and our, um, agent, Davina, is here. Um, and, um, we have filed a, a plan of operation, um, for the new operation here and I bring that up because I understand that, talking to Mr. Hubrick, that there were some problems at this location previously. I want to assure you that on behalf of Mr. Walia, that he has numerous operations in southeastern Wisconsin and one of the reasons that he stepped into the share sale was, uh, because he owned the gas station around the corner. Uh, so I, I think he, in terms of his track record, um, I just recently, uh, appeared in Racine on a tavern request that he had down there for a previously closed place and we went through, uh, all of the, the, in that case, the common council's concerns, um, that they had to show them that we knew how to deal with nuisance abatement. When Mr. Hubrick told me that they had problems previously with bartenders, uh, being drunk and people leaving there causing trouble, I want to assure you that those days are over, uh, with regard to this location. Um, the unfortunate part of it is the, uh, transaction that occurred, um, with the foreclosure. Uh, if in fact, uh, the place had been sold, uh, and the liquor license was in place, owners can sell their, you know, the liquor license can, uh, either, like say it's an LLC, you can transfer the LLC, um, and I've been part of that in the past, but in this case, we had a licensed establishment and lost the license because of the foreclosure. And so, um, we believe that it's appropriate to continue the license here on, um, this, on major thoroughfare, allow Mr. Walia to finish the, um, rehab of the building and also the, um, the room, uh, cleanup, make sure the rooming house, uh, gets approved in August, so we wouldn't have, uh, the opportunity until, I think, August nineteenth, until, um, that issue gets resolved. So, um, uh, it's unfortunate that we have, um, one ten thousand and one thirty thousand. It's too bad they can't be equal in some way, but, um, I would just ask you that in, in the case of this particular establishment, um, we would like the opportunity to continue and, um, hope you will agree and, and allow for us to, um, occupy the establishment, the Butler Stop, under the, uh, under the license that you have available. Um, thank you very much. If you have any questions, we're certainly here to answer any of them.
I do. Uh, how many bars does Jay have now? Just the one in Racine or is this his first?
No, no, he has, no, he has had other, um, hotels and so, uh, he has other stores and, um, uh, I know that there is one on, on South Layton in Milwaukee, um, where he has a bar there as well, so, um, but he also has, uh, he's currently building a hotel in, in Wawa Tosa, so there, he has several different operations, but I believe, I don't know that he would have gone looking for this establishment but for the foreclosure and, but for the fact that it was around the corner and so it's all there on that same little block there.
The one thing that kind of stands out with me is I know, um, I know he's been, he's had the gas station for several years.
Okay.
We, I don't, although I don't have exact data, there seems to be a long history of property complaints that we are constantly, our village administrator is constantly asking Jay to do.
Okay.
And I'm wondering what he would do different because it, it seems like we're always asking two, three, four times to get the fence fixed, the litter picked up, the, you know, issues with the gas station. So I'm wondering what make, what can you say to us that we weren't, we aren't going to have those same problems with this building?
Well, uh, one of the things I worked for municipal government most of my career before, um, after I was a judge, or before I was a judge and, um, I, I specifically worked in nuisance abatement areas. And so, um, I recently have appeared in, um, Milwaukee on a gas station issue where, um, they had the, uh, the same concerns and so we're, um, w- working to put a plan in place so that those issues are resolved and put it in a way that, um, the, the particular management of the gas station has a way to, um, make sure that those things are done. So I think that whatever, um, was causing the issue in Milwaukee, we've corrected that and I think that, um, I wasn't aware and I hadn't heard those complaints here with regard to the gas station, um, before right now, but I do believe that, um, that is something that I can, uh, assist in putting a plan in place, um, so that there is a, a procedure for nuisance abatement, um, whether it's be, um, any, whether it's building code violations or litter, all of those things, in my opinion, lead to bigger problems if they're not taken care of. So then, you know, it may be, well, litter, well, it's not just litter, it's the way the, uh, the place presents itself and what that necessarily, uh, can represent and bring to the community in terms of additional problems. So, uh, I certainly, um, can commit to you that we can, um, as part of this and as part of the whole block, we can certainly, uh, put a plan together that addresses those concerns and make sure that you don't have to ask more than once if you do have to ask.
On the same, now back to the actual building, do you remember the date that he took over about, the, the sale date?
No, I don't have that.
Because I know our fire department has a list of complaints, um, for that building, especially with the rooms upstairs.
And I can speak to that.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and let you.
Um, the, uh, the building inspector went through on Friday and I confirmed today that the building inspector, there was a couple minor issues that they, um, laid out, but they, um, they just need some photos to be taken and sent to them. Um, and they, they did pass them on that and then the fire department went in there, um, yesterday and today, um, and they provided me that. Well, a couple, again, some minor things that are outstanding, but they have passed, um, those, those, uh, issues.
So I, I believe that whatever those conditions were that existed under the previous ownership have, uh, are being taken care of and, um, the, the way it was presented to me, the, um, the issues that remain were so minor that they didn't even think it was worth writing an order and, and as Mr. Hubrick said, just send us pictures and show that they're done. But those things should not be an issue with this organization.
Is Ms. Morrissey going to be the person in charge?
Yes.
Can you, can you join us for just a second? You've heard of the history with that location, I'm sure, correct?
Yes.
Can you please walk us through how you would manage that differently and how we can expect a better future if you're in charge?
Um, well, it will be run a million percent differently. She had, um, no business management experience. She came in there with a host of issues before she even took it over and was overwhelmed. We have the resource, we have the people to fix all that. Um, I manage the W and like I said, I mean, I try to work with Ben and every time he tells me I try to get things done. I have lawn service coming in, so there won't be weeds, there won't be grass, garbage will be picked up, um, I'll work with the neighbors and the community. We want to be a part of this community. He didn't buy this place just to have for like a month or a year. He wants to actually have this be an established Butler business and work with everybody in the community and the neighbors and the people who, you know, help because like the bar across the street, we're, you know, we have a great relationship with them. Um, I'm very familiar with quite a few people in Butler and I have a great relationship with most of them. So I think we can do a wonderful job on that bar, make it a good, positive part of the community. We're going to open the restaurant, have a full-service restaurant, not like bar food or, you know, chicken wings. It's going to literally be a walk-in, sit-down family restaurant.
I appreciate that. I guess I'm looking for more specifics on your approach because the actual management of the operation, um, I, I think is, needs a deeper dive than, than what you've just explained to us.
Well, we're going to hire professional people. We're going to hire professional bartenders. We're going to hire more, it's not just going to be me managing, we're going to hire a professional manager. I'm just getting it started, getting it up and going and we're going to get professional people in to, who have years of experience.
You're not going to be the person that actually manages the operation.
I'm, I'm not going to be the, the long-term manager. We are going to hire a professional manager, a business manager, someone with. someone with years of experience to run everything. And he's going to have offices in the back room. So there'll be, there'll be security, there'll be cameras, it'll be monitored like 24/7.
Who will have offices in the back room?
Jay, Wallya, he's going to have like some of his, you know, offices back there. He's going to have the cameras all hooked up and he's going to have more people monitoring him on a regular basis. So if an issue comes up, we can address it immediately.
Okay.
So I mean, we're really going to try to just be positive and, you know, just make it much better than it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for her? Okay. So we have to decide which business should receive this license. And I guess I'd be of the opinion that as much as I don't want to hold anything against the Amoco or Jay's gas station, it's, I'm worried that we're going to be constantly chasing after him to fix up or do something at the Derby, the old Derby district. I do like that Charlotte has a full year with us. She has a security plan. She's had 75 events in the last year. And I think that it just gives a better impression of, Charlotte just seems a little bit, a little more organized. And I think we'll know what we're going to get. And it would not be, the liquor license wouldn't be used as much, I guess.
And if I can just speak to it, the, I believe it's section four dash 20-some. I don't know the exact number, but we, with the liquor license law that we, or ordinance that we passed earlier this year, I believe after Act 73 was passed at the state level, we did correct our ordinance. And we do state that you have to have an occupancy permit to be able to have a liquor license be applied. So that, that they did apply for an occupancy permit, I believe, back in April or May. However, that was held up by the rooming house license. There needed to be two inspections done, the fire in the building that just got done on Friday and Monday. I had communicated a couple of different times to Ms. Morrissey about how that was going to be held up if those inspections didn't get done. And those kind of got, I'll just say to be quite honest, they got rushed at the end to get this done before the meeting. So currently their occupancy would be coming up on August 19th. But the, right now, they do not have an actual occupancy permit, which is, I, I'm not a lawyer. I can't say exactly, but I believe that there could be an argument to be made that you could say that they could get the liquor license contingent on approval of that. But then again, that would be sitting out there for a month and there's ifs out there if it's going to get approved, if it's going to be tabled, if it's going to, you know, get delayed. So I guess that's just my, my commentary on that, as far as, is the village administration's position on that is we do have an ordinance that should obviously be followed, that they need to have an occupancy permit. And there is that alternative. Again, it's $30,000 versus $10,000, but there is just that requirement in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Like a comment, so my, my thoughts, I guess, are, the occupancy permit aside, I just kind of look at the history of both camps here. And Charlotte has demonstrated, you know, a great willingness to comply and make things really work well. From the security to the success of her, the events that she's had in the past year. I'm not a personal fan of the gas station for lots of reasons, but the history there has not been supportive of this, of this new thing. So I'm pretty sure where I stand on all this. I haven't heard anything to change my mind.
Does the board have any other comments?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class B combination retail license for Charlotte Warren, for Charlotte and Moore Wedding and Event Center.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you both. Item F, discussion and possible action on granting a street use permit to Bethany Gonzalez for a birthday party.
Yes, so this, Ms. Gonzalez has come before the board a number of times to request this. This is just a birthday party that she'll be having at her home. And I believe that there's a couple, I think that usually there's a bounce house that sticks out into the street somewhat. So it's just to close off that section of the road so everybody can be safe during the party.
She did this last year too.
Yeah, she's done it a couple, yeah, a number of times.
I'll make a motion to approve the street permit for Bethany Gonzalez. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item G, discussion and possible action on Resolution 25-15, a resolution authorizing McMahon to initiate and assist in conducting a request for proposal for contracted emergency medical and fire services. And I will also take public comment during this topic if anyone has anything to say. Anytime, once you hear our presentation.
So at this time, I will defer to Jeff from McMahon and Associates to kind of give a brief overview and update on what he's been working on and the resolution for you today.
Thank you.
Good evening. As you know, we were contracted to come on board and do a study of the department and look for sustainability issues and where you should go in the future. That was met with a little bit of the change right off the bat when we got the notice that there was a coverage issue. I can tell you what we've done so far is we've had an interview with administration and discussed the situation and the circumstances. I've had an interview with the fire chief. And then I also met, and it became apparent in both of those interviews that there's a concern regarding coverage and there's a concern right now regarding coverage. It's getting more and more difficult. This isn't just a butler situation. It's nationwide hiring firefighters and EMS personnel is getting more and more difficult. So to get enough personnel here to cover is almost impossible for the chief. So after the discussions, I also requested some documentation from the chief on the department. We reviewed all of that. And then I met with all of the adjoining chiefs. You have four departments that surround Butler. I met with all of those chiefs and discussed the potential for any interest in coverage and how they could help out and not help out if there was an interest there. I was very happy to find out that all four were very interested and are willing to help and would like, would like to, to help cover the situation. After meeting with the administrator and having some discussions regarding that, I recommended that we put out a request for proposal to those four departments, get proposals on how they could cover, how they, and what the cost would be, and be able to bring that back. I think you're in a situation where there's a concern right now. And I think the chief would agree with me, struggling just to get coverage right now and make sure that you have coverage 24 hours a day. So the sooner we get that request for proposal out, the sooner we can get the proposals back and ideas on what the cost will be and what the potential fix to this situation would be. And we would review those, bring those back to the board and then move forward from there. So that's kind of where we are right up to tonight.
So is this stage of it, getting proposals, is this is for short term until you complete? And then we make a final decision off of whatever is brought to us? Or are we just bypassing and jumping right in and just farming out the fire department?
We're, we feel that you're in a situation, you know, there was two phases to the study.
Yep.
The second phase was to implement whatever the recommendations were going to be. You're in a situation right now where we have very serious concerns about whether you have.
Hundred percent. I'm a hundred percent in agreeance with you.
So we kind of jumped to the second phase right away, although we're still, I'm still starting a report and there'll be a report as we go through this. We're looking not just for short term, we're really looking for long term. But again, it's going to be brought to you. And by the time we bring the proposals to you, I should have the report pretty well put together. So you'll kind of have the first phase and the second phase to take a look at and decide what direction you want to go.
So this is a short term and a long term?
Correct.
By the time we decide on the RFP, so.
Right.
Okay.
Now, is the village, is the fire department included in this?
Yes.
What you're talking about right now?
Yes, we've, we've met, we've discussed it, we've gone through all their documentation.
So there's technically three other companies that are, villages interested in Butler besides the fire department?
There's four.
Four, yeah, the village fire department.
The village fire department is not one of those.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. So it's separate.
Right. And I'm not sure, I'm sure all of you are aware, but the village department is a separate corporate.
It's an entity, yes, separate entity.
Correct. And they're, they're at the stage and the chief has submitted two letters to the village basically saying, I can't get coverage. I can't tell you that I can keep covering you.
So it's my understanding on the letters, and I've talked with Chief Zulik about it, is they are interested in also submitting a contract. And if I'm misspeaking, let me know, chief. But theirs would be then, you know, additional living quarters, equipment. They were going to submit a budget for what it would take for them to do it as well.
You're talking the adjoining departments?
I'm, I'm talking, Butler Volunteer Fire Department was going, was going to submit a bid to also be one of the contractors, one of the options. That's, that's my understanding. Is that?
I'll spit, I'd like to say Miami might have a lot of conditions. I mean, it's going to have to turn into a part-time, full-time.
Yes.
There's.
Yes. Well, I want to leave that option available for you. That's my understanding of the letters.
So then it would be a volunteer fire department still?
No.
It would be its own entity?
No, when they volunteer.
Okay, okay, so maybe I'm seeing it wrong. So it would still be another entity. It's not going to be a municipal fire department. It would be whatever company they want to call it, correct?
Well.
Seems muddy to me.
I have not heard that from the chief, but I don't feel that's an issue at all. We could provide them also with the, the RFP so they could submit a proposal.
Yes.
I don't know, until we get the proposals back, we don't know what that means. We don't know if they would submit it as a volunteer company that they currently have.
It would be another company though, whatever they want to call it, right? Doesn't?
It could be the same company.
Well, then it's volunteer, so my words are, you know, but you understand what I'm asking, right? Okay, thank you.
I, I would say for this discussion, include them. And if they don't submit a bid, they don't submit it. But at least we're including.
That's not a problem.
That's my understanding of the letters that I've received.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so then with this process then, again, looking for terms here, the model of going to a part-time, full-time where Butler would run it, will that option be included in this? Because that, or that have to be generated by NACMEA?
Um, I'm not.
In other words, we would be a set of volunteer, we'd be full-time, part-time staff, Butler would run it.
Municipal.
Right, right. And then another, you know, Brookfield, whoever, they would not be providing service for us. So I'm just asking, is that option on the table at all or?
Well, all options are on the table. The request for proposals basically asking the four adjoining departments and now the Butler Volunteer Fire Department to submit their proposals. We will evaluate those proposals and make recommendations to the board as to which direction, you know, the advantages and disadvantages to each proposal.
Okay.
So no matter, you know, they, we leave it open enough that they could submit any, you know, they could come back and say they're going to do it with all paid on call. They could come back and say they want all full-time, you know, or they could not come back with a proposal.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm hearing that doing it pay part-time, that we would run it isn't an option that's out there right now. I'm not saying it can't be, but I'm not seeing where that would, I thought maybe that would be one of the options. If we were to go on as scheduled with a complete phase one, then a phase two, you know, that that would have been maybe one of the options generated depending on the data that you came up with. But it looks like right now, because the needs are what they are, that's off the table.
I personally don't feel anything is off the table. But I think we need, the village needs to do something as soon as possible.
Understood.
And we keep, we're keeping this request for proposal as open as possible. So we get, we allow other departments to submit proposals that may make sense for the village.
So we're, we're pushing this to fast-track the proposals instead of having it farther down the line when this would come to fruition in, in your, your study, right? So we're just getting these answers for you to put together quicker, correct? So basically that's what we're, we're doing here tonight is to just give you the authority to fast-track options.
Yep.
Okay.
You know, the bottom line of the study, and we do, we do a lot of this type of work. Instead of doing just studies, we do a lot of what we call management council, where we work with the department and work with the village and figure out what's, what your solutions are, help you make good recommendations to you, help you make that decision and then help you implement it.
Right.
The problem with the study, if we wait for a study and three months from now I hand you a study that says, hey, you should do all this stuff, it may be too late.
I'm, I'm in agreeance that the, the need is, is
Correct.
Really here. And I, and I, I'm happy for the move to get some answers for, for us to look at sooner rather than later because we do need to move quicker than what we thought.
And I'm sorry, if I can just, and to answer your question, Mr. Holdman, I think that, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, we would get a pretty decent idea of what a village-run fire department would look like based off of the proposal that Pete would put forward. Because I'm guessing that there's, he's going to, i- if he puts forward a recommendation or a proposal, it'll have a lot of like the same things that we would need to have for, for the village. So it would have, it would have living quarters, it would probably have updated equipment, updated apparatus. Some would probably be possibly even a little bit more expensive because we would have to include stuff like employee benefits that we would not otherwise have, that, you know, he might not be offering where it would be WRS contributions, life insurance, that type of stuff. So there could be a little bit of differentiation, but I would say that that would probably mirror pretty closely to what it would look like for a municipal-run department. Again, Jeff, you tell me if I'm out of line on that.
No, I think you're exactly right. I, I think we're, we're leaving it open and we're allowing them to submit a proposal. But realistically, if I were to, if we were to do the study and I were to tell you what you need for a fire department right here, you are not in a position where you can afford that right now.
Great, great.
Understood, sure.
So with that, I, I think where we are today, I, I think the RFP really should be for a long term. Because that's what we're, no matter who does it, that's what we want. We don't want to, I mean, that's what I'm, what I think we want is.
And it does say 10 years in the, in the letter, so.
Yep, it does give, it's a long-term proposal. We're also looking for information from those proposing, from those departments to, for short-term solutions too. And we have one of those that was presented already. We have, you're in a, you're in a situation where you have, you don't have a mutual aid agreement. You have a Mavis agreement, okay, mutual aid box alarm system agreement, which starts technically at the third alarm. Okay, that's when you go to a box level alarm. There's the initial call that you get and then there's a working still level that happened before you get to the Mavis box. Once you get to the Mavis box, now you're covered by a mutual aid agreement and a written agreement, state law. Right now, to get assistance at that lower, those two alarms lower than a Mavis box, you have nothing in writing for that. So we have in a, City Brookfield and Chief Cass is here, submitted a proposal to do a mutual aid agreement also. I don't think that's in front of you tonight or it's not. So it's something that we're, we're working on and the attorney will take a look at to get to you so that you're covered in the short term with mutual aid. It's always great in, in this business, in fire protection and EMS, departments always want to help each other and they're more than willing. All the surrounding departments are more than willing to come and help. Problem with that is if you don't. Problem with that is if you don't have that in writing. They can't just give you all of that and not worry about liability. You know, wrecking a million-dollar ladder truck when they come to assist you. Um, so there's gotta be stuff in writing, so we're working on that too.
Great.
That clears up some other questions I had, that's good.
In the RFP, how do you handle handle like um, excuse me, like a. An escalating clause or how does how does that, do you write that into the RFP or how does that work so long-term? We.
Right. You know where you're going. That'll be part of their proposals that they'll present. We we request that in there, what they're what they're looking at long-term and what the cost will be long-term.
And I believe that I did put language in there um with, I think that I talked to you, Jeff, where uh with the tenure. Um, I wanted to have a minimum and a maximum, kind of like our garbage disposal um contract that's five years. They have a minimum like that they would um increase and they have a maximum, so I think it's like a minimum was two and a maximum of four, so. Basically want a projection um for out ten years, so it doesn't happen where, you know, year three. You know, bam, you know, all of a sudden it just, it makes this huge jump. We want that ten-year. Um, to kind of be able to to know what to expect, so that's what I, that's the part that I put in there is wanting to have the minimum and maximums. And.
We would also have a minimum notice period before any type of step in uh larger than that kind of step increase. And that would give us enough time to go back out to bid to the three other potential departments. Just so that we can kind of keep competition uh and keep a check on prices with that.
Yeah.
Well, I, what I'm looking for is just like Landon went in with Monomni Falls. And now Monomni or Landon is kind of cut. Cut and done, so whatever they're paying right now is maximum dollar to Monomni Falls.
Right.
I'm trying to stay away from that, so we have something where we can work back and forth here.
Sure.
Uh, I I don't want to end up like Landon where they're, you're locked in, but at a monster dollar.
Yep.
So.
The the RFP in front of you is is pretty comprehensive. And I'm expecting the proposals to be pretty comprehensive and and we will take a look at all aspects of that. And and help you, help you make the decision in in the right direction for the village.
The only, the other question I have is uh on the dates, uh August sixth would be proposals I do. Can we shorten up, given the urgency of the matter, instead of waiting till the nineteenth, shorten that up a little bit, maybe? Put that on the twelfth, or do you need more time to get your presentation together?
Um. We could, we could potentially get it done in that amount of time.
Okay.
It would shorten it. It would shorten up the time that we have to. Get back to the chiefs and get clarification if we have issues on their proposals. Uh. It wouldn't give us a whole lot of time to do that. We did shorten up.
Okay.
The the time for the proposals to get back, they only have three weeks. And and that's a pretty short time period for a request for a proposal.
Especially if there's magnitude.
Yep.
They're anticipating, I'm sorry, they're anticipating the request for proposal?
Yes, I've I've talked to all of them a second time, once we had made the decision that this was coming in front of you. Um, and they're all very anxious and.
Oh, I bet they are.
Interested in getting the RFPs.
Could we make those dates and then just put put them as like tentative or might subject to change if if it works for your schedule? Just so we're not, if something, if we're ready to go sooner than the nineteenth, I guess is what I'm asking.
Sure.
I I don't know, I I don't know why we're trying to push him on on and I. And I understand the urgency, a hundred percent, but. I think we want him to be comfortable with looking through what he needs to. And tells us in and he understands the urgency better than anybody on this board a- at this point, I believe. Uh, so I don't think he's gonna short us on wh- what he believes is safe for us. I just don't think we should push him to hurry up.
I I think what President Kasser was saying is we're gonna make a decision on the twelfth. Based off of the dates on the RFP. And then the the winning. Department, if you will, is gonna be notified on the nineteenth. I think, is there a way to condense those dates on, or if we're gonna decide on the twelfth, can we tell them on the thirteenth? So that we've 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 subtracted a six-day wait. We've escalated things by six days. Are we able to 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 still give a reasonable amount of time? To complete the work, but so somehow compact it so that we're not. Waiting a week to tell you we like you.
Might possible.
Again, I I mean. You're you're.
Right.
Showing me that you think you like to have your time. Yeah, so.
But I also, I also do understand the urgency.
Sure.
Um, it's just, I want to make sure that, you know, I don't know what's gonna come back. You know, we could be in a situation where. I don't think this can happen. We could be in a situation where all four submit several proposals.
Great, correct.
And now I got more than four proposals to look over. Um.
And in the meantime, you're gonna address that other thing with.
If it comes sooner, you're gonna tell us.
Yeah, you know, so that's at least a, that's the first fire to put out, no pun intended, but that's the.
And you.
The immediate thing to address, which will be within a week or so.
Next meeting.
I believe, Ms. Tarks, do you have a comment to make?
Yes, I have a comment. Um, I'd rather keep it on the nineteenth. If he has the information before that and he feels comfortable, there's no, can't we call a special meeting for that?
Correct.
Simple as that.
Yeah.
I want a thorough report.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I don't want to push to push your your guys. And if it comes back, great, but I guess to to the president's point. Just so that we all are in agreeance that if it comes sooner, I we we can rock it, right?
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm for that, but I don't want to push or put pressure on you.
And and I also feel if we get that mutual aid agreement in place, if that works out and you approve that. And we work with City of Brookfield and 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 the chief.
And take a little bit of a breath.
Things.
Takes the pressure off.
Yep.
Yeah, because originally I was under the inter- understanding that it would be end of the year or up until there of next year. April, May is when they're through. So there, yes, there's an urgency now, but I'm under the understanding that the chief is still here with the village until this contract is done. Unless we say different.
Correct.
Yeah, my understanding was the January first date indicated a transition time. You know, for all that, so that they would be in place, but there's gonna be overlap and transition and. There's gonna be a lot of moving parts to all that, that whatever we decide to do, there's gonna be a lot of changes, so. It's not gonna, they're not gonna have moving day and it's, you know, it's gonna happen all the next day, so that's why there's that. Existing dates are are there. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And and. I want all of you to understand that, you know, the the chief's in a tough position here.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You know, he's.
Absolutely.
Been here a long time, they've done a great job. Um, but. You you can't get help, you can't get coverage, there's, you're you realize that there is very limited in what he can do. And I believe he also realizes the liability in his position that goes with that. So. You know, you and and I look at it that you are, you are now McMahon's client. And I'm not comfortable with what's going on. And we need to do something as soon as we can and we are, we're working on that to make sure you're protected.
Yeah.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Um, I was gonna just, any other questions for Jeff?
Does anybody in the audience want to say?
I was gonna ask the audience if anyone had any public comment regarding this item. Okay, you can, if someone has a motion.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to approve moving forward with Resolution twenty-five fifteen, authorizing McMahon to initiate the RFP.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I would only say that I would like to keep the dates tentative, just in case something, if we have to have a special meeting, we could do so. That's all I was, all I'm saying on that. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, the I'm gonna go into closed session. The board may consider conveying in the closed session to pursue to section nineteen point eight five one C. Wisconsin stats to consider the employment promotion compensation. Or performance evaluation data of any public employee of which the governmental body has jurisdiction. Or exercises responsibility, item of discussion. Administrators, two-year performance review.
I'll make a motion to go in a closed session.
Second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to go into closed session? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On opposition, say nay. Motion passes, closed at seven P M. Okay, that's fine.